Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education pursuant to New Jersey statutes and the rules adopted by the Board of Education. Notice of this meeting was sent to rural community newspapers, The Star-Letter and Cable Vision of Elizabeth, on Thursday, June 21st, 2012. In addition, this notice is posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of 500 North Broad Street, and pursuant to this act, a copy has been filed with the City Clerk of Elizabeth. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers to this June 28th, 2012, meeting of the Elizabeth Board of Education, who are here to govern, provide management oversight, and make policy for the district. The superintendent manages the district. This is a meeting of the Board in public, not a meeting of the public. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of the Elizabeth Board of Education permanent record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask you that you silence the sound on your electronic devices. Since it is legally mandated that these proceedings be accurately recorded, I may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us. Thank you for your interest in the Elizabeth Public Schools. There will be a public portion for citizens to address the Board. Participants for the public portion must sign in one hour prior to the advertised start of the meeting so that they may have the opportunity to speak. The sign-in sheet states the name, address, telephone number, and reason that the person wants to comment, whether it is an agenda item or a general education comment. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Here.
Castilla.
Here.
De Silva.
Here.
De Nosa.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Mann.
Here.
Pereira.
Here.
Trujillo.
Here.
Nasco.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez, will you lead us in the invocation, please?
Please point your heads. Father God, we thank you for being here today to do board business. We give you thanks that we are closing the school year today. We give you thanks for all the blessings, for everything that we have been able to accomplish for our children in Elizabeth, for all of the staff, all of the teachers, everyone who was responsible for leading all the children to do great things and be recognized all over the country. We ask you that we can close the year in peace and that you grant us a lot of blessings in the upcoming school year that starts next month. We ask you this, and we thank you in the name of your sin Jesus. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the Star Spangled Banner by Francis Scott Key.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn-turning light What so proudly we hailed At the twice-last evening Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight O'er the red parts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Please remain standing as I ask the superintendent to lead us in the Pledge of Ethics.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, the public, and the viewers at home on EPSTV. Thank you for joining us tonight as we pursue our vision of becoming one of America's best school systems. Please join me in our Pledge of Ethics. As a member of the Elizabeth Public Schools professional learning community, I will treat people that I wish to be treated. To do that, I pledge to: Understand that the school community is a special place. Listen respectfully when someone else is speaking by paying close attention and not interrupting. Speak in a calm voice and use proper language. Dress appropriately for teaching and learning. Inspire the best in myself and others by celebrating successes and learning from mistakes. Care about others by demonstrating acts of kindness. Be a lifelong learner by taking every opportunity you can to learn from others. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Now you may be seated as you can view the corbelee video.
We believe all students can learn and achieve at high levels.
In Elizabeth Public Schools, rigor means actively creating and implementing challenging standards that define the level of cognitive complexity of expected learning. Such standards are applied at all levels in the district, including classroom activities, instructional plans, course content, student work, assessments, both summative and formative. We will ensure that all students graduate prepared to pursue a post-secondary education. It is through such an education that the achievement gap is eliminated. Elizabeth Public Schools students will strengthen the nation's economic, intellectual, and social impact on the world. In order to do this, we will ensure that every student, regardless of their socioeconomic background, is inspired to participate fully in their educational experience and cultivate a true passion for learning.
We believe that teachers make a positive difference in student achievement.
Elizabeth Public Schools teachers make a positive difference visible not only through higher test scores, graduation rates, and attendance, but by championing the love of learning at every opportunity.
We will recruit, develop, maintain, and celebrate world-class teachers.
A world-class educator has high expectations of himself and their students. Is willing to challenge and be challenged, and pursues learning opportunities for continuous growth. Such an educator sees the potential in every child with no exception. They teach with passion and make an effort to ensure that every student reaches their full potential.
We believe that effective leaders produce excellent results.
Effective leaders are conduits for student success, inspiring Elizabeth students to think, to learn, to achieve, and to care. Effective leaders repassion others, earning the trust and loyalty of those around them. It is their incredible passion and energy that engage, inspire, and motivate others to achieve excellence.
We will recruit, develop, retain, and reward results-driven leaders.
The goal is only excellent results, and effective leaders do not tolerate anything less than excellence.
Our leaders will demonstrate an honoring will to contribute to and enable those around them to increase student achievement.
We believe that a high performance game produces a legacy of enduring greatness.
Elizabeth Public Schools is dependent on its internal and external networks working in collaboration to ensure high student achievement. The internal team members include the teachers, staff, and community members that directly affect students' achievements. The external team includes the community at large, partnerships with nonprofit organizations and universities, faith-based communities, and state and national education agencies.
We will build a high-performing team that achieves excellence.
The end result is a sustainable system that supports networks of people committed to excellence through education. Our students will leave Elizabeth Public Schools with a passion for learning that will lead them through a lifetime of fulfilled dreams.
I'm going to ask my colleagues to join me in front of the dais for a couple of presentations. I would like to present the Diversity Champion Awards for efforts above and beyond the minimum required and demonstrating creativity and proactive approach concerning issues of diversity and tolerance. Please come forward as I call the name of your school. Winfield Scott, School Number Two. Terrence C. Riley, School Number Seven. Dr. Orlando Edreda, Academy, School Number Twenty-Six. Dr. Antonia Pantoja, School Number Twenty-Seven. Juan Pablo Duarte, Jose Julian Martí, School Number Twenty-Eight. Dr. Albert Einstein, Academy, School Number Twenty-Nine. Ronald Reagan, Academy, School Number Thirty. Francis C. Smith, Early Childhood Center, School Number Fifty. Donald Stewart, Early Childhood Center, School Number Fifty-One. And Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Early Childhood Center, School Number Fifty-Two. About a round of applause for them. and commend him on a job well done as well. At this time, we would like to recognize the Garden State Seek Association and the Every year, they conduct workshops in our schools that promote tolerance, diversity, and more recently, an anti-bullying theme. This program has been thriving in the Elizabeth Public Schools since 2005, when the Elizabeth Public Schools partnered with the Seek Coalition to promote diversity training. On behalf of the Elizabeth Board of Education, I would like to present this plaque to Har Dayal Singh, Director of the Garden State Seek Association.
I'd like to thank our Officer Charlie Smith, who has been the pioneer in actually introducing this program and working with us, in particular, the United Six, who has a memorandum of understanding signed with the district to continue on the diversity program. One of the key burning issues today is bullying. I'm sure it will be brought up. According to the statistics, in 2012, approximately more than 13 million children will be bullied, based on the statistics that are out there. Historically, right now, as I'm speaking, in White House, Congressman Mike Honda has created a bullying caucus that constitutes the federal agencies, the state agencies, and we have our visitors right there. There is a whole meeting going on and discussion to actually come up with measures of how this can be handled at the national level. So I would encourage, you know, that if we can work more closely and make sure that this sort of issue is addressed in a very serious manner so that our children can have a more brighter and healthier future. Thank you.
Thank you once again, Mr. Singh. Before I ask Mr. Kennedy to lead us through the agenda, Mr. De Silva would like to address the Board and the public. The floor is yours, Mr. De Silva.
Thank you, Mr. President. First and foremost, I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight to our June meeting. It's kind of a rare occasion. I didn't think that this would come, or that this would happen anytime soon in my lifetime. But I have certain obligations I need to take care of. The demands on my job, my family, have put me at a disadvantage in being able to perform the duties of the Board of Ed like I have done for nine years, actually ten years, and like I'd like to continue to do. But as those of you who are parents and have little ones will understand, it's not easy to raise a family, put your kids to school, work long hours, and come here on a weekly basis and give your free time for the betterment of the district. Now, let me not confuse you. I enjoy doing it, and I'll continue to work and support this district and the Board that we have here tonight. You guys have a lot of challenges ahead of you, but the results have been remarkable. The results have been incredible. What we have accomplished over the years is simply remarkable. I think that most of these accomplishments would be expected in 20, 30 years, and this Board has been able to do this in the last seven years, six years or so. So I enjoy being part of this administration for ten years. If I may take a moment, I'm going to ask my three boys to come up here for a second. Brandon, Dylan, Tyler, can you join me for a second? Come on up. This way. Come on. Come on up. One step. Over here, Dylan. Come on, Tyler. Don't forget, always get the little one, always gets left behind. As you may understand, I have three small children, and we have children of this age, there's a lot of demands that come, whether it's sports, their homework, after-school activities, and when you work long hours, you're limited time. For the first three years that I served on this Board, I missed on a lot of things with my oldest child, and I don't want to do that. I want to be able to be there for them. I will continue to support this district from the sidelines, but my family comes first. And like I said before, I didn't know that I would come to this point, and excuse me if I'm a little emotional, but it's not easy after ten years. But I want to congratulate this Board. You guys are doing a great job. Know that whether I'm here, whether I'm home, whether I'm at work, I am here for you guys. For whatever you need, whatever the obstacle may be, whether it's advice, experience that I've had for the ten years I've been on this Board, I am here for you, to work with you, and whatever it is that you need. And that same thing goes for Mr. Munoz. I remember when you came on, I was part of that voting group that was criticized for bringing you on, and said that you were too young, that this district couldn't accomplish. And you think, here we are, six, seven years later, and we've shown remarkable results, remarkable results. The superintendent should be commended for it. With the support of this Board and the administration that we have, we have done great accolades here in our district. So I think, don't commend me, but commend the superintendent for his leadership, and thank this Board for the way they have led this district to where we are today. I expect great things from this district, and I want to thank you, the parents at home, that have given me the opportunity to serve, and make no mistake, I'm far from done. I have family to raise, I will be on the sidelines, and one day, I will rise again. I will run for office again, and I will be here, sitting here or sitting somewhere throughout the city since serving. So thank you very much. And at this time, Mr. President, I formally introduce my resignation from this Board. I need to take care of my family. Thank you.
resignation.
Second motion made by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. Pereira. Any questions or comments?
If I may, Mr. President?
The floor is yours, Mr. Trujillo.
I'd like to say to Mr. De Silva and to his family, thank you. Thank you for sacrificing so much time from your personal life. I know it isn't easy when you have three children. Having two of my own, we struggle with our priorities sometimes and our responsibility between family and the work we take on here at the Board. It's people like Mr. De Silva that come along and step up and take the responsibility that is public life. We're often asked why we do this, and it doesn't take a hard look to understand why Mr. De Silva does it, because he says, three children who are in the district, well, two that will be soon, one it is, and the future's theirs. And all the hard work and everything we do is for children like Mr. De Silva's family. It takes a lot of courage to run for public office, and Mr. De Silva's given this district a lot of his time, and we are indebted to him because under his leadership, this district has made incredible strides. While being here, he had the courage to support a young superintendent, which did not have a lot of support then. Thanks to his courage and his vision, here we are today, the number-one urban school district in the state of New Jersey with three blue-ribbon schools, over eleven of the schools built, two currently under construction. The future is bright in Elizabeth because of people like Mr. De Silva. So Armando, for the last five years that I've been able to serve on this Board, you've not only been a colleague but a friend, and I can tell you, you will be missed. You will be missed, and on behalf of our colleagues here and my family and myself, I thank you for your service, for having the courage to serve in a city like Elizabeth. You will be missed. I wish you luck.
Armando, I want to wish you the best. Thank you for all the years I've wanted to come on the Board. Again, you were there for me, to guide me, to show me the ropes, so I really appreciate it. I'm glad that, you know, the family's there, got to see the kids, my dad, they've grown so much. I'm sure that your wife knows a little relief that there will be a little more time now to handle homework and Android applications on the phone and all this stuff, so, you know, you have us there. Thank you for your service to the district, for everything that you've done for the children. And like you said, you know, you'll be back, and we know that, and we know that you're there for us. So thank you, may God bless your family, continue growing, and we'll see you out there.
Mr. De Silva, enjoy your children. These are the best years that you could enjoy them. I did, and it works. You will be back. I want to thank you for your service. I know you will be around. Oops, thank you, and don't forget us, okay?
Mrs. Montalvo here.
Thank you. Mr. De Silva, I remember when I first came on this Board, and you were very, very, I would have to say, you took the initiative to actually take time to explain some things to me, and you would call me and talk to me about things that were going on, and just watching you be the President of the Board at the time when I came on, it inspired me. It showed me that you really care about this district, and I know that you are definitely an advocate for what we do, so, and I know there are priorities, and I commend you for taking the step that you've taken today to take care of your family because that is definitely first. And I always say that, you know, I'm always a parent first and a Board member second because I'm always going to be a parent, but I'm not always going to be a Board member. And, you know, I just, I take my hat off to you and wish you the best in all your endeavors. And I know we'll see you around, so I'm not saying bye or anything like that, I'm just saying, see you in another day. So hopefully, everything works out for you and your family, and I wish you all the best.
Hannah, what are you going to do with him home now? We're all judged eventually by what it is that we've accomplished throughout our lifetimes. And the one thing that you can be certain of is that you left a footprint with your time here on the Board. The time that you've served as a Commissioner, as a Vice President, and as a President, those ten years that you mentioned, this school district has come a long way. ten years that you mentioned, this school district has come a long way. And it's thanks to people like you who have volunteered their time for the past ten years to make sure that every child, not only the three lovely children that you have there, but that every child in the city is given the best opportunity to learn. And thanks to your efforts, the Elizabeth Public Schools are in a much better place today than they were ten years ago. So I thank you for that. My family thanked you for that, and the community thanks you for that. You have left one heck of a legacy, and I know it's gonna continue. Whatever it is endeavor that you're gonna take on, you will be successful at that too. So from the bottom of my heart, I thank you for your leadership, I thank you for your mentorship, and I wish you success in whatever it is that you take on in the future. Mr. Munoz, the floor is yours.
Mr. De Silva, I just want to thank you very much. We've worked pretty closely together through the years. You've been a wonderful board member and commissioner. It took a lot of courage on your part as an individual, as well as the whole board, to take on some initiatives that maybe at the time seemed risky or seemed too aggressive or whatever it was, but in most cases, when you started to support policies that directly impacted on student achievement, and when you started to approve programmatic changes, dividing up the high school redistricting in the community, creating pre-k aid schools, eliminating middle schools, all these initiatives that we've put forward over the last seven years could only have happened if the board supported it, and you were a great part of that, not only as a member but as a leader, because once you're on the board, you quickly realize you're one of nine, and in order to effectuate change and positive results for our children, you have to work as a team, as a board, to influence each other and to support the initiatives that one thinks will produce the fruit that you, you hope you will eventually get. And sometimes initiatives start slowly, but then you get great results, and sometimes it takes a little bit longer. So you should be proud that you're leaving now with three national Blue Ribboned Schools, two nationally recognized and ranked high schools, a district that is redistricted to have pre-k aids, because parents wanted to be able to have their kids in their own, in their own neighborhoods, go through grades, make decisions to go at the high school level. And the list goes on and on, you know, you split. As we, oftentimes, people wonder, when you start to focus on academics, will other programs suffer? And we continue to improve academically across all grades, and even one of, in some of the most challenging grades, high school, it's been a challenging grade, but after this year's results, you can see that we're, we're growing academically. But we continue to excel in our sports teams, getting into championship finals and winning state championships. And, and you know, we've never done this before, but we started to do it this year, is winning national championships in our bands at the high school level. So all of this was your hard work, along with your board members, and then your wishes get actualized by the teachers and the aides and the custodians and the four thousand employees that wish to fulfill the division of the board. And you've done a wonderful job. You can hold your head up real high that you influenced the direction of twenty-four thousand students every year in a very good way. Thank you very much.
Roll call for the superintendent?
Aristov.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mann.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Saturday, yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
We have a short video that we'd like to present to Mr. De Silva and his family to view. I'm gonna ask my colleagues to join me. In our last presentation of the evening is the award for years of dedicated service to the children of Elizabeth. Since 2002, Armando De Silva has served the Elizabeth Public Schools as an Elizabeth Board of Education Commissioner. Over the course of these ten years, he has served, served as a former president and vice president. He served on many board committees, as well as being an active member of many community organizations. He is the founder of the Second Ward Block Association, former member of the Salvation Army Board of Directors in Elizabeth, parishioner at St. Genevieve's Church, and a member of the Elizabeth Portuguese Americans Citizen EPAC. As a member of the Elizabeth Board of Education, Mr. De Silva has made many important contributions to the vision and mission of the Elizabeth Public Schools. His commitment to making a positive difference is commendable. On behalf of the Elizabeth Board of Education, we thank you, Armando De Silva, and ask that you please come forward to receive this plaque in grateful appreciation for your many years of service and dedication to the children of Elizabeth. Mr. Kennedy? Would you like to make a motion to nominate new commissioner?
Second?
And that individual is Anthony Padlo.
Second at motion?
Motion by Mr. Denosa, second by Mr. Trujillo.
Make a motion to close the nominations?
Second? Motion by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. Ferreira. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mr. Kennedy?
Aristov.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mann.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people. So help me God. I
Anthony Padlo.
Do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education. And that I will faithfully impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my abilities. So help me God. Congratulations.
Mr. Padlo, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to working with you. You know the challenges that we face and the hard work that's involved in running a school district like ours, but we look forward to working with you, and, and we will be accessible to you to show you the ropes, and look forward to a very successful run as the commissioner of the Elizabeth Board of Education. Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, if I may?
Mr. De Silva.
Congratulations. I look forward to, to working with you. As you're aware, you have some big shoes to fill. Mr. De Silva leaves a lot to, tough job to be like Armando. I hope you're not like Armando, but that'd be a good thing. The poor man, he came here, he had a full head of black hair. Now he's got a full head of gray hair, so that's a testament to what's, what's ahead of you. But all joking aside, the work that we do here is serious work, it's important work, and it can be very satisfying. And I hope that you dedicate yourself, and we're here to help you. This is a, a good group of people. These are very honorable people who've served on this board with good intentions. This is a great district, and you joined this board at a very exciting time with a lot of great things happening, and our best days are ahead of us, and I look forward to, to sharing those days as your colleague on this board. I wish you luck.
Mr. Kennedy, will you lead us through the agenda, please?
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of the board meeting of June 7th?
Approved the minutes, second. Approved by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Ferreira. Any comments or questions? Hearing on roll call, Mr. Kennedy?
Aristov. Castillo.
Yes.
Padlo.
Here. Upstate.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mann.
Abstain.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Acceptance of the Secretaries and Treasurers Report for the month of April.
Accept the report, second. Moved by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Ferrera. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
Padlo.
Abstain.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mann.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
2A Personnel Report.
Move the report, second. Moved by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. Ferrera. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
Padlo.
Abstain.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mann.
Abstain.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
3A Supplemental Tuition Report.
Accept the report, second. Moved by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. Ferrera. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
Padlo.
Abstain.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mann.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
3A Supplemental Tuition Report.
Move the report, second. Moved by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. Ferrera. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
Padlo.
Abstain.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mann.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
4A Request for Consideration.
Move the report, second. Moved by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Ferrera. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
Padlo.
Abstain.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mann.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
4B Use of Facilities.
Mr. Kennedy, I'd like to move 4B with waiver of all fees, I was one and two. Second. Moved by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. Ferrera. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
Padlo.
Abstain.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mann.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
4C Field Trips.
Approved the trips, second. Moved by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. Ferrera. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
Padlo.
Abstain.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mann.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. President, members of the board, public here tonight and at home on EPS TV, I'd like to report to you the excellence news from the Elizabeth Public Schools since our last board meeting. The graduating seniors of John E. Dwyer Technology Academy, Thomas A. Edison, Career and Technical Academy, Admiral William F. Paulsy, Junior Leadership Academy, Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy, Elizabeth High School, and Alexander Hamilton Purportory Academy, joined together in New Jersey's largest high schools commencement ceremony on Thursday, June 14th, at 6:30 at Williams Field. Graduation event was the Elizabeth Public Schools' third annual commencement exercise since the largest high school in New Jersey was restructured into six independently operating high schools. Students in Mrs. Royne and Ms. Sanchez's class at Maple G Homes, 105, have been studying about relaxation and meditation through yoga. Dr. Albert Einstein Academy School, number 29, named Rui Rigonio as the Teacher of the Year. Twelve students from the Academy of Engineering at John E. Dwyer Technology Academy job shadowed Verizon employees at the Network Operations Center, NAC, in Bedmister, New Jersey. The eighth graders at Twosom Lobotur, Marquise de Lafayette School, number six, received rave reviews as they entertained students, parents, and members of the community by performing seven musical skits from the musical Grease under the direction of Mr. Al Hawkins. Edison's Talent Show on May 25th, freshman sophomore class council of Thomas A. Edison Career and Technical Academy hosted a school-wide talent show. The event showcasing singing, dancing, and other talents entertained students, parents, and team members. Congratulations to the winners. Singing rapping first place, Brianna Perez. Second place, Trey Yanmeo. Dancing first place, Lady Connect Dance Group, Joanne Stevens, Doschani and Jasmine. And second place, Gabriel Gilbert. Special thanks to the class advisors, Cole Gudanek-Curtis and Olinka Akinsui, who organized the event, and to the entire Edison family for their support and participation. Elizabeth High School's Symphonic Band captured the superior rating at the J.P. Stevens Concert Band Festival in Edison, New Jersey. Ramon Perez and Sandra Higaldo were named outstanding soloists. On May 11, Elisa Endara was honored as the 2011-12 Tennessee Riley School, number seven, Teacher of the Year. On May 25th, at Dr. Orlando Adria Academy School, number 26, auditorium, the school was transformed from a pine floor of basketball courts to a mountain desert of Asia, where merchants brave for frivolous travel in order to barter their goods with the dreams of securing great wealth and power. The production was part of a larger interdisciplinary project where all classrooms immersed in the history, culture, geography, and literature of one of the stops on the Silk Road. During the production, each center was explored as members of each class posed as weary travelers journeying between stops and then told all about their stop to the hushed audience while traditional music of the region was played in the background. Intertwined in the production were four choreographed numbers by third and fourth grade students, the school concert and jazz band, and a dancer from Nanyin Chin Dance Company, and a fashion show with garments of traditional silk remodeled by the school staff to show how silk was used to demonstrate social status in the ancient world. Important invited guests were the principal students from the East Street School in Donghuang, China. Their sister school was able to view and interact with the audience through the internet using video cameras, a starboard, and Google Plus. Their participation was one of many cooperative ventures between the two schools. This amazing learning experience held to coincide with Multicultural Week. Second Annual Decathlon, Twosom Lobotur, Marquise de Lafayette School, number six, Second Annual Decathlon was a success. The decathlon measures the following body movements: flexibility, aerobics, 1,000-meter, 2,000-meter run, anaerobics, push-ups, curl-ups, long jump, functional stretching, agility, jumping, and hurdle jumping. Decathlon club consists of 27 students. Seven finalists were victorious. First, Eli Remy. First, Zelena Perezza. Second, Calvin Johnson. Third, Ever Rivera. Fourth, Jagun Benitez. Fifth, Dazan Dickerson. And sixth, William Diaz. Science Fair, Nicholas, Assala Claus, Peterstown, Leport, Peterstown School, number three, held their first annual science fair. State finalist in the National American Miss New Jersey Pageant, Autumn Lee Ann Deborah Greenas, student from Dr. Albert Einstein Academy, school number 29, was chosen as a state finalist in the National American Miss New Jersey Pageant, which will be held on August 25th and 26th at the Hilton in East Brunswick, New Jersey. In honor of National Lupus Awareness Month, the team members of Almora School, number 12, showed their support by wearing a purple shirt, donating $5, and signing a bulletin board dedicated to lupus awareness, which is located in the main office. The Elizabeth High School Boys' Track Team, the 2012 Elizabeth Boys' Track Team recently competed in the North Two Group Four State Sectional Championship, which included outstanding performances from our student athletes. After the first day of competition, the boys' team led the section by a total of 32 points. Long jumpers took first and second in the sectional championship, with Kyle Ward winning with a jump of 22.2 and Shane King making second with a jump of 21.4. Elijah Hughes won his second sectional championship running the 100-meter dash. Other noted accomplishments are Marquise Robinson, fifth place in the 100-meter dash, fifth in the 400, 400 meters, and sixth in the 200 meters. Philip Walker threw his season-best mark, 172 feet in a javelin to win the state section by over 15 feet. The boys' team finished third overall with 44 points. At the NJSIAA Group Four Championship, Shane King finished fourth in the long jump and Kyle Ward finished ninth. Both student athletes will compete in the NJSIAA Meet of Champions, June 7th, in Old Bridge. Congratulations to head coach Austin Holman and assistant coach Tony Williams and Ismael Melody. That concludes my report for this evening. You're all empowered to achieve excellence. You can follow the Elizabeth Public Schools on our website at wwwepsnjboard. You can follow us on EPS TV as well as our Facebook page and Flickr and other internet options. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. Kennedy, will you lead us to the rest of the agenda, please?
Thank you. Type 5 Authorization Report.
Move the report, second. Moved by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. Ferrera. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
Padlo.
Abstain.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mann.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
5A Supplemental Authorization Report.
Move the report, second. Moved by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mrs. Mann. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
Padlo.
Abstain.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mann.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
5B Second Supplemental Authorization Report.
Move the report, second. Moved by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. Ferrera. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
Padlo.
Abstain.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes, one extension on page two.
Mann.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
6 Finance and Accounting Report.
Move the report, second. Moved by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. Ferrera. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
Padlo.
Abstain.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mann.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
6A Transfer of Funds.
Transfer of Funds.
Second. Moved by Mrs. Mann, second by Mr. Ferrera. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
Padlo.
Abstain.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mann.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Type 7 Award of Contracts Report.
Award of Contracts, second. Moved by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. Ferrera. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
Padlo.
Abstain.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mann.
Abstain.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Abstain.
Nazca.
Yes.
7A Supplemental Award of Contracts.
Award of Contracts, second. Motion made by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mrs. Mann. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
Padlo.
Abstain.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mann.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Abstain.
Nazca.
Yes.
7B Second Supplemental Award of Contracts.
Award of Contracts, second. Moved by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. Ferrera. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
Padlo.
Abstain.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mann.
Abstain.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Abstain.
Nazca.
Yes.
8 Communications There Are None, 9 Claims List.
Pray the Claims, second. Moved by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. Ferrera. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Abstain.
Castillo.
Yes.
Padlo.
Abstain.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mann.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Abstain.
Trujillo.
Yes, one extension on page 12.
Nazca.
Yes.
10 NJSIAA Membership.
Move the resolution, second. Motion made by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Ferrera. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
Padlo.
Abstain.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mann.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
We have revised policies and exhibits, 3450 Policy Money in School Buildings, 3453 School Activity Funds, Policy 4121 Substitute Teachers, and Policy 6142.10 Internet Satient Technology, and a Resolution for Adoption.
Adopt the Policies, second. Motion made by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. Ferrera. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
Padlo.
Abstain.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mann.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
10B Appointment of Special Counselors.
Move the resolution, second. Moved by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Ferrera. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Mr. Kennedy.
Aristov.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
Padlo.
Abstain.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mann.
Abstain.
Ferrer.[1782.88]
Yes.
Trujillo.
Abstain!
Nazca. Tennessee Excess Workers' Compensation and Employers' Liability Coverage.
Move the resolution.
Second. Moved by Mrs. Munn, second by Mr. Pereira. Any questions or comments? Hearing Unroll, call Mr. Kennedy.
Arista.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Padlo.
Abstain.
Denosa.
Abstain.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca. Ten B Natural Gas Supply Contract for Elizabeth Public Schools.
Move the resolution.
Moved by Mr. Pereira, second by Mrs. Munn. Moved by, correction, Mr. Kennedy, moved by Mrs. Munn, second by Mr. Pereira. Any questions or comments? Hearing Unroll, call Mr. Kennedy.
Arista.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Padlo.
Abstain.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Abstain!
Nazca. That concludes the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. At this time, the microphones are open for public comment to those who have signed in prior to this session. I shall call individuals to the microphone based on the order of assignment. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. The total time of public comment shall be limited to sixty minutes. No individual is able to yield their time to another individual. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. The following rules for public participation shall apply. Time limits will be strictly enforced. No personal attacks on individuals, no vulgar or indecent language. A person may address the board no more than once during a single meeting. Speakers should refrain from naming individuals. Comments or questions posed during public participation will not be debated. As a reminder, this is a meeting of the board in public, not a meeting of the public. I would like to call Jose Rodriguez, six eighteen Jackson Avenue.
Thank you, good evening. I want to start first off to congratulate the seniors that just graduated now a couple of weeks ago for a job well done. And in this season of graduation and graduations, I want to talk about the Elizabeth Public School graduation and dropout rate that I've spoken before in the past about. The last figures that this Board of Education reported to the state, it showed that on average, in the last three years, almost, almost a thousand twelve-to-eighteen-year-olds have dropped out of school. That's almost three-hundred-and-thirty-three students per year. That's almost a student per chair here in this room. Right? Those twelve-to-eighteen-year-olds are in my streets affecting the crime rate. What's more is that the latest figures, also that this Board of Ed has reported to the state, also showed that out of almost twelve-hundred graduating seniors, only two-hundred-and-forty-six are planning on attending a four-year university. As a teacher, I know that the ultimate goal is not just four-year universities. But in this weak economy, a strong education is the best armor that we can give our students. It has been proven that people with a college education tend to get paid more and get better jobs. We need to equip our students better for the challenges that they will face. I do not find it acceptable that more secondary-age students drop out every year than go to a four-year college. Again, more secondary-age students drop out every year than go to a four-year college. In many town hall meetings and Board of Education meetings that I have attended, you know, a lot of the commissioners have, have stated that improvement in district, in this district is a marathon and not a race. And lots of students in district, in this district, excuse me, are suffering and cannot wait. While improvement comes slowly, they are suffering again and are being done in injustice. I can't stand for that. I can't sit idly by while my students, my community suffers agonizingly slow. Again, I tell you that in our schools exists a culture of haves and have-nots when it comes to which school students tend to attend. Whether you don't realize it and deny it, or whether you implicitly allow it to occur for political gain is implorable either way. Ladies and gentlemen, there are students suffering again in our schools. I have a vision where good education will cause this city to blossom. A new type of Renaissance where all students are educated equally and fairly. That not only the most academically, or that the most highly academic students are applauded, but a system that also helps its most needy students. I hope one day you can join me in realizing that schools affect communities, that bad neighborhoods don't make bad schools, and realize that bad schools make bad communities. I hope. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'd like to call Kelvin Tann, six forty-six Magnolia Avenue.
I would like to say good evening to the Board of Education.
Good evening.
But my concerns is the principal of School Six, Lafayette, how they, how this discouraging the children. We want these kids to bloom, but how can they bloom when you like tear them apart? You know, it's been going on for the last, I went to the Board of Education to see what's been done. The two thousand ten, two thousand eleven school year, I got a secretary. I went, I tried to go to the Board of Education this year and they denied me sending anybody. Me as a concerned parent, I want to know what can I do to see anybody that really cares about the students in a whole? You know, that's, that's my concern. You know, I really know what, I want to know what can I do? I'm trying everything possible, by all means, to do it the proper way. And I really, really want to address you today so I can know the proper way of doing things. Because I am, I am a concerned parent and I really care about whether my kid's going to be on the street. Because it's either, is they going to get, the teacher going to get their attention, or the guy on the street going to get their attention? Me as a parent, I'm doing everything possible to keep them on the right road. But during the school, during school time, when a educator tells my, test, test their, or demolish their morals, what am I to do? So, what they do, they cut, they do everything possible while I'm at work. And now, you know, at the end of the day, I go to the school, I talk to individuals, and they tells me that my child is fifteen, he has no business being in the school, such, 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 such. I don't know why he's here, he's too old to be here, he's, he's this, he's that. Instead of trying to teach him and try to move him on, at least you just tear him apart. I really don't know what to do. Can anybody help me?
Mr. Tann, you didn't put your name, your phone number down on the sign-up sheet. You can give your sign-up, your phone number to Mr. Gonzalez and
I sure will.
and he will, we will have someone reach out to you there.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Maria Maderos, two twelve Inzie Place. I'm here because last month we were here on this Chris Mangoya, the principal that assaulted the fifteen-year-old girl. And last year, last month, no, I apologize, a couple of weeks ago, you had that security guard, Rosa Deser. She's been employed for eighteen years. Now, I have the aunt that spoke to the security guard when she went to the school. And the first thing that security guard had told both the parent and the aunt is like, no, 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 no. No good, no good. Guia lascio fue malo. And in English, that's the translation, what he did was wrong. Now, she came up here and tried praise that he never did anything wrong. I don't know if she was trying to cover herself, but what she, what she did in front of the parents was two different things because she turned around and told the parents, que ya te, you look with a mucho. That she cannot talk, you know, lower it. She had let them know what was going on and she didn't approve it. Now, for her to come up here, it was a two-sided story. I don't think that was fair. Okay? Not only that, we have another gentleman here, a father, that's saying that, you know, he's always saying that it's up to the parents. Okay, we are parents, we send our kids to school, but it's also your job to build our children's morals up. Not having that same principal that put his hand on that child to tell this parent's child that he shouldn't be in the school. He's fifteen, you know, he should be dropped out, not building the kids' morale. Not trying to find out, okay, why don't we send your child to Hill Press? This isn't working out. Why don't we get him tested? See, there's another problem. The kid was never tested. You're always saying that you're trying to improve, but what children are you trying to improve? The ones that are going to give you the blue ribbon school? Because from where I stand, all kids should be having the same education. It's not picking and choosing on what children that you want. Some kids are fast learners, it's true, and some kids are slow learners. But if you have parents that are willing to come up here and talk about it, and then trying to get in touch with Jerome, Mr. Jerome, that you're saying that he works with the community, and they can't get in touch with him, or he can't give a call back to a parent, that's saying that you aren't trying to work with the parents. It's like they're using and choosing on the schools that you want to be blue ribbon. All schools should be blue ribbon because it's our tax-paying money that's trying to make our schools better. We don't want kids out on the street because if you look at it and through the jail system and the prison system, it's with the education of the children. And they don't have that right education. And education starts in the school also, not at home. So, I'm just asking you for you to look into it and start helping us parents on informing those parents that are trying to get their kids help. Because if you're discouraging, how we're going to help us?
Can you wrap up your comments, please?
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you for your comments. I'd like to call James Carey, two hundred Second Street.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The last school board meeting that we were here, the mother was sitting right here along with the daughter who was allegedly assaulted. And neither one of you, with the exception of Miss Munn and the newly candidate, had a way with or, or sympathy to the mother, or just to say, just to show her that this, this whole thing is being investigated and we're looking into it. So, I'm curious to know tonight, I mean, where's your compassion? It could have been any one of your children. Any one of your children. I sat there and watched and observed and see whether you guys would come down and say, ma'am, I can assure you that this problem is being looked into. Neither one of you. Oh, in addition, I want to know, what is the actual protocol when, when there's an incident at one of your schools? Can somebody please indulge me? Mr. Superintendent, can you indulge me? What is the protocol when there's an altercation or a situation at the school? Because we had, I had a titled eighteen A book, okay, but I want to hear your interpretation.
Mr. Carey, you know that we are here for, to hear your comments. It's not a question-and-answer session. We would be happy to address your concerns after the meeting.
No, but I'm here now, this is my time, public, I want to know what is the protocol? If there's an altercation? And see, that's why you don't have parent participation because situations like this, I'm coming up here, I'm not being belligerent, I just want to know what is the protocol? Because there was not an incident report filed. He filed a police report on May, Friday, May the twenty-fifth. The incident happened on May, May twenty-third, that Wednesday. Had he filed the incident report when the situation initially happened, he would have known that the incident happened on Wednesday, May the twenty-third. And then he looked at the dietic report. It is, it does, it's not consistent with the police report. He says that he had to restrain the young lady in the auditorium. Well, I spoke to one, two, three, four, five, six individuals, the young ladies, and I'm not going to disclose their identity because they have, they had to be in court, and they all assert there was no situation in the auditorium, it was a verbal squabble. And then the girl that he had, he actually did restrain in the hallway, it wasn't the young lady, Turea. So, I want to know what is the protocol when there's an incident that takes place in one of your schools? Anybody?
Do you have any other comments?
Can you answer the question since you're so quick to respond?
We'd be happy to send you, we have your address. We'd be happy to forward you our policy regarding
Another program, I had, I had a titled eighteen A book, Violence and Vandalism.
Would be
But I wanted to hear you guys say it because the, because the protocol wasn't followed, the procedure wasn't followed. I contacted Mr. Dunn on May twenty-fourth and told him about it, and his exact words were, James, there is no incident report I have no knowledge of. Then I did a follow-up call on May twenty-fifth and he also indicated
I'm going to ask you to wrap up your comments, please.
I was wrapping up, and then I sent the mother up to the Imperial Building to meet with Mr. Dunn, and there was no incident report.
Okay.
So, you guys did the math.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. President, Mr. Carey, please don't leave. I will, we will try to address this issue with you. Okay? Don't leave, don't leave, okay? Because I understand, we're on a time scale here, so just don't leave, okay?
At this time, I close the public comment portion of the, of this meeting. The President requests a motion to go into private session to consider matters exempt under the Open Public Meetings Act, specifically for discussion of personnel, specifically PCSA, WF, grievance settlement supplemental personnel reports, bargaining unit and administrator contracts, reorganization, KM, KN, harassment, intimidation, and bullying results, and workers' compensation claims, specifically JG, LE, and MD. The Board will reconvene in public to take more formal action.
Mr. President, if I may, prior to going into private, make a comment?
Floor is yours, Mr. Trujillo.
Thank you, Mr. President. We encourage all members of the community to address this board during public speaking. Unfortunately, on occasion, we get caught up with the priority of celebrating the children's achievements and recognizing those members of the community who go beyond the call of duty. For whatever reason, we recognize their, their achievements. And public portion sometimes is later than we'd like it to, but nevertheless, I find that it's an important part of what we do here. The current policy was to organize the public speaking portion so that the public would have equal time to address their concerns. But besides the fact that we do open the mics, we do have staff on hand that will answer these questions and concerns. I always encourage parents to try to deal with issues at the school level, first and foremost, before bringing it to the administration, to the board. Yeah, I always find that it's better to communicate. Then there's those incidents where communication at the school level does not work. And there is a system and a process that does protect the citizens and the students and protects their rights. And that, I assure you that that is in place and that we have a lot of respect for that policy and that process. And as the speaker asked, I'm sure that we could, we could provide him with that information so that it's clear. That policy also protects the staff to make sure that their rights are protected. See, the board does not pick sides. We advocate on behalf of the children and the citizens first, but we do have an obligation to our staff, who are wonderful people. There are many great professionals in our district. So, it saddens me when there's a discourse and when there's a disconnect. Because I know there's a lot of great people in our district who come to work every day with good intentions and do a lot of great work. To the other speakers' comments, I would say, simply running for public office and coming here and denigrating the work that the hard-working staff does and the progress that's made simply to move your, your own political agenda every day. I think you're better served by coming here with solutions and offering solutions rather than pointing out shortfalls. out shortfalls. There, I believe there isn't anyone on this board who does not agree that there's a lot of work to be done, that every child deserves a great education. You had your turn, your turn to speak, sir, now it's my turn. That's the way this works, okay? You speak, and then I get my turn, all right? We believe that all children deserve a great education, and I'm sure that most people can understand that a district with over twenty-two thousand children from all walks of life, with all sorts of challenges, it's a tough, it's a tough job. Turning a ship around isn't easy, and that's what we're trying to do here. We're trying to turn the ship around that for many, many years, many years, just went on the wrong course, okay? Is this board perfect? Absolutely not. Have we done everything we can do? Absolutely not. There's still a lot to be done, okay? And in order to do that, we not only need this board to be, show resolve, but we also need the community to be involved. And that doesn't come, that doesn't happen very easily. So I encourage the community to continue to come here and voice their concerns, to use the, the mediums that there are to communicate with us. I assure you that we take your comments and your concerns very, very seriously. We are really concerned about what's going on here. Many of us have children in this district, we are taxpayers in this city, and we are doing this with good intentions. Unfortunately, not every day we can make everyone happy, and I apologize for that, but that isn't our intention. Our intention is to make sure that every child is educated, that we create a great environment, and our record stands on its own. If you go back, yes, every school should be a blue-ribbon school in a perfect world. Perhaps that's true, okay? And we'll strive for that. That isn't easy, but it doesn't negate the fact that we do have three. I challenge you to go across the state and find another district, okay, like Elizabeth, who has three blue-ribbon schools, okay? I challenge you to go throughout the country and find a school district who has built more new schools in the period of time that the district in Elizabeth has. It is hard to argue with the success we're having in Elizabeth. Sure, there are a lot of children, again, I tell you, there's a lot of children that could get a better education, and we're striving to give them that education, but it isn't easy, it doesn't happen overnight. And it doesn't just happen with these nine board members and this superintendent, it happens with the community. This room should be full of parents, okay, and educators every month, okay? Because that's what it takes. Unfortunately, that's not the case, okay? And I won't sit here and have someone just come here and bash the board for their own political agenda because they want to get elected, okay? You come here, you voice your opinion, and that's fine, that you're right, but I have a right and obligation, I have an obligation to call you out for what you are, okay? And that's, it is what it is, okay? And anyone who knows me knows that I tell her how it is. I've always been honest, and I, I wear my heart on my sleeve, but you'll get the truth from me all the time, whether you like it or not, okay? And I, I don't know of any board member here who is inaccessible. I don't know of any of my colleagues who will not step up and take a phone call or take the time to meet with a parent. I just don't believe that is true. I just, I just find it hard to believe that we won't take the time, okay? So thank you, Mr. Nazca, for my time.
Thank you for your comments. There's a motion on the floor. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.